All right, it's six thirty. This is a regular school board meeting, April fifteenth. This is a public meeting of the school board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Educational Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Deb, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. We have all seven school board members here tonight, so we do recognize a quorum with the agenda and packet that was sent out to us last week, and with that, I will make a motion to approve our agenda.
Second.
Any questions on our agenda tonight? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? No? Good. We will start with recognition tonight of the Green Tree Elementary Fourth Grade Battle of the Books. Principal Gray.
So, one thing about Green Tree you'll notice is that when something happens, everybody shows up.
It's awesome.
If you're from Green Tree, just wave your hand. So, we have a fantastic fourth grade teacher here, Mrs. Wake, and that's what's really cool about this. So, if those students could just come up and join me. We have Jessica Vanderkin, who's right here, who is just a fantastic student. We have Talia Stevens. We have Anita Sun, not Jessicus Sun, they're twins, you could get them easily confused. And we have Ava Garret. And so, in West Bend, we do Battle of the Books in fourth grade, and they read a set of books that are different genres, and they're given an opportunity, kind of like Family Feud, to answer questions, so you can come around. And so, the students do a competition throughout a couple series of days, and these were the students that scored the highest in the West Bend School District.
Wow.
I believe they took thirty-seventh place, and you know, the most important thing is not only do they get exposed to a variety of genres, but they're also great kids as well, which is the most important thing. And we're just really proud of them. As I said, you know, at Green Tree, we do things and everybody comes out, and that's why it's such a great school, and thank you for recognizing them.
Cool. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Jacob and Libby for our high school update.
Awesome, thank you. So impressed with the Battle of the Books. I just remember I have my little trophy still, but it definitely wasn't first place in the district, so super impressive. We're going to start out just talking a little bit about some upcoming things in West Athletics. So, we're right into our spring season, and everything is getting rolling. Hopefully, we can avoid the snow for any more cancellations. But, boys tennis will be playing at Germantown at three-thirty tomorrow, and at Slinger on Wednesday. Boys golf will be competing at Meadow Valley Golf Course on Wednesday. Boys baseball is five-one overall right now, and ranked number nine in the state, and they play East on Wednesday at four-thirty. Boys track will be competing at home on Thursday. Girls soccer plays at Franklin High School at six-thirty on Wednesday, and at Sheboygan Falls High School on Saturday. Girls track will be competing at an Invitational in Oak Creek tomorrow, and at home on Wednesday. And the West Bend West Dance Team was selected for a very prestigious award, the J.C. Cosin Sportsmanship Award winner by the Wisconsin Association of Cheer and Palm Coaches for Dance Teams for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. It's a huge honor for them, and they will be recognized in November at a conference as well.
All right, a little bit going on in East Athletics. East Track is going to be, or just competed at a Little Ten reunion meet this Sunday, or Saturday, sorry. The outing allowed them to hone their skills, and they'll be competing at the West Bend West Invitational on Thursday. Boys golf plays sixth out of eighteen teams last week at the Sheboygan Falls Invitational at the Bull. They'll be back in Sheboygan this Wednesday and Thursday, playing at Black Wolf Run and the Irish course at Whistling Straits. Boys baseball is seven and oh after an incredible start to their season. As Libby said, they're going to be facing off against West this week, so that's a good cross-hall matchup. In other parts of the school, the Chamber Orchestra Concert will be tomorrow at seven PM at the Old Courthouse. The Band Spring Concert is tomorrow at seven PM at the Silver Lining Arts Center. They'll be at Madison in two weeks, playing at the Capitol Building, so stay tuned for that. The Third Annual Autism Awareness Soup Night will be this April twenty-ninth. Enjoy soup donated by local businesses, and in ceramic bowls made by West Bend art students. Future Business Leaders of America competed at a state meet in Green Bay last week with three entries, Hospitality Management, Network Design, and Computer Game Simulation. Five students out of the group qualified for Nationals in San Antonio, Texas next summer. And then, we're going to give a little bit of highlights going on at school in some of the classes. So, like this upcoming week, Mr. Clark's Anatomy Classes are holding their second annual blood drive. That'll be Thursday from six-thirty AM to one PM in the Salt Gym. Walk-ins are welcome, so feel free to come in and help out the community. The speech classes are going to be doing demonstration speeches. So, myself, I did one on chipping, and Libby did one today on team-building activities, which was really fun, surprisingly. Yeah, we've all been there. There are team-building activities, not that fun. Yeah, hers were fun, though. The personal finance students are going to be taking part in Reality Day tomorrow. For those of you who don't know, that's what the students do to prepare themselves for life outside of high school. So, they get a budget, they get a job, and they have to go through kind of a weekly, you pay bills, you pay utilities, and just kind of live how it's actually going to be. And finally, the West Bend High School Business, WB Smart, has started selling pop sockets for individuals at the high school, and will be selling them for students at Badger. Community members are welcome to go on the website, wbsmart.org, and you can ship in an order, and we'll get it back to you in a week. So, that's all Libby and I have for you guys this week. Thank you very much.
Oh, Jacob, I think you want to talk about Dolphins that's going on next week.
I will talk about Dolphins. The Dolphins meet, I think it's Thursday and Friday and Saturday. It's a great show of a lot of the, I don't know, east-west athletics together, and it's going to be very fun this year. I think the theme is game show, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah, and so, they theme the songs off of their theme, and it's just going to be a lot of fun, so I encourage everyone to go out and take a look at that.
Great, very good. Thank you, Jacob and Libby. We've come to public participation tonight, and I'll just quickly summarize our Board Policy one eighty-seven. Residents of the district, parents of children, and the district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Once you come up to the mic, I'll give you three minutes to speak to the board. The board will not engage in debate or remarks, we'll just listen to your comments, and when you come up to the mic, please state your name and address in relation to the board. So, we'll start with Dan Leonard tonight.
I'm Dan Leonard, West one-nine-eight, North one-six-eight-six-four, Ridgeway Drive in Jackson, and just taxpayer, commenting on Jackson Elementary. I like to say what a tangled web we've weaved. Just goes to show how out of touch you are, shows that when you only talk to people who confirm your bias, you don't look at an issue properly. After the vote of the electorate, I requested a copy of the electorate sign-in page, so I could cross-reference names with addresses, to which I was offered a copy with addresses redacted. Open records, transparency, each person who speaks has to give name and address, vote is no different. I know you guys don't check. After all, you and Jackson Board rallied your families and friends to come vote for what you're proposing. No wonder the secrecy. That's not how this works. Contrary to what you may think, this isn't a popularity contest. You are not an activist, you are a representative of the taxpayers. I constantly hear blame put on passports by current boards, so by logic, that puts the blame on you. Now, you see the horrendous problem with deferring maintenance, and you blame passports for this crazy plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you continued this crazy plan. Number one, you aren't in the land, the real estate business, you have no business buying and selling land. By your own logic, passports have designated land for Jackson Elementary. They knew and expected Jackson to grow, then some brainiac decided to build it right along Jackson Drive instead of properly utilizing the land. How do other cities much bigger than Jackson properly utilize their land, usually surrounded by much busier roads than Jackson will see in a hundred-plus years? Number two, with deferring maintenance on something you needed to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on, probably over a million dollars, not sure what was spent on the land purchase in two thousand nine, just for land purchases. Then, more wasteful spending on trying to sell your idea to the taxpayers. Three-plus mailers, what's the cost on those? Who paid for the yard signs and other MISC ads that I've seen about? I saw in a Facebook group where someone asked respectfully who paid for the yard signs, the response by one of the organizers was to say that she doesn't respond to idiots. To top it off, Mr. Ongart thought it was a good idea to like that response with a laughing face. Pretty petty and distasteful response to a genuine question asked by a taxpayer. Is that what you think, Joel, that we are idiots? This past election shows the lack of trust the taxpayers have in your decision-making abilities. Quote comes to mind by Frederick Bossia from his book, The Law. "If the natural tendencies of man are so bad that it's not safe to permit people to be free, how is it that the tendency of these organizers are always good? Do not the legislators and their appointed agents also belong to the human race, or do they believe that they themselves are made of a finer clay than the rest of mankind?"
We're at three minutes, right there, Mr. Leonard. Thanks for coming tonight.
Came here months ago to try to help, but it became clear you were only interested in forcing this forward.
I will follow our board policy tonight, which is three minutes of public participation, so I am going to ask you to sit down.
Once again.
You have been at three minutes, which is in...
I'm not here to cause trouble, but to help.
Following our board policy. Mr. Leonard, if you continue speaking, you will be in disruption of a public meeting, and we will call our resource officer to have you removed. We are following...
This is not the first time that you cut me short.
We are following our board policy, which is three minutes.
I asked for more time than a previous one, and you refused to give that one, too.
Thank you very much.
So, do you have any answers to any of that?
I will refer something that you said at the very beginning to Deb Wrench, which is you were requesting a list of voters. That can be done through our county clerk, Ashley Reichert. There is a fee for that. That is not done through our school district, and Deb Wrench over here can be happy to assist you in getting that voter list.
Before we go on, I'd like to ask Mr. Kirkergard to please let us know. I know that the school district did pay for the three mailers, but I believe that the school district did not pay for any such yard signs. That was a separate organization, I believe. Correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, Tracy Wells is up next.
Hi, my name is Tracy Wells, North one-six-one, West one-nine-zero-seven-four, Oakland Drive, Jackson. I just wanted to thank all of you guys on the board, and Erin and Paul coming in for your time and dedication to the West Bend School District. It's not always, it's a very challenging job at times, and the stuff that you guys have to deal with, it's just a very hard and thankless position to be in at times. You guys do a great job making the best decisions that you can, and sometimes you have to deal with other idiots that seem to know everything. So, I just want to thank you guys again for your services.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board tonight? If not, we will move along to our clerk's report.
The Board of Canvassers met on Thursday, April fourth, to canvass the votes from the spring two thousand nineteen election. They met again on Monday, April eighth, to canvass the one provisional ballot received. The total number of votes cast for the school board of West Bend Joint School District Number One was seventeen thousand six hundred sixty-six, of which Paul Fisher received six thousand nine hundred sixty-five votes, Christopher Bach received four thousand five hundred votes, Aaron Dove received six thousand two hundred one votes. Therefore, Paul Fisher and Aaron Dove were each elected to three-year terms expiring April two thousand twenty-two. And then, for the referendum results, the total number of votes cast on the referendum question was fourteen thousand one hundred seventy-eight, of which yes received six thousand five hundred thirty-three votes, and no received seven thousand six hundred forty-five votes. That's all.
That's all. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to our consent agenda tonight. On the consent agenda, our minutes of our April first regular board meeting, dispersments posted to April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, the Head Start Status Report, and two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Start College Now and Early College Credit Requests.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions, discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to our action items tonight, and our first is revenue and expenses in the aggregate from July first to March thirty-first, which is a quarterly report, two thousand nineteen. Andy Sarno.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information this evening. There was a supplemental document that I do have up on the screens. I hope you had a chance to review it. I do need to apologize. This is a fairly new process that we've put in place when Superintendent Kirkergard joined our school district, but what I would like to offer is that the format that you're going to be seeing, we will use it in different steps of the process. So, just as an example, this is going to be a format that will look very similar when I bring forward the budget amendment in June, and even on that document, I'll be sharing an initial request for approval of next year's budget. So, this is going to be a document, again, I want to provide some consistency with what you're seeing and how you're seeing it. So, where I have varied the approach, it is still fairly consistent with the document that you've seen about two or three times now over the last year. So, what this document does is it compares activity and date from our budget to year-to-date activity, and just for frame of reference, because we can often say we have a million-dollar budget, and we've spent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, well, what is the meaning behind that? We're more than three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year, but we're largely upon the school year. So, should we be wrapping up? Should there be more or less expenditures based on the budget itself? So, as a frame of reference, I did include not just this year's budget and actual, and I know it might be just a little bit hard to see this on the screen, but I do have just the pointer. And so, we'll be taking this year's budget, which is really the first column, the next column in the green and the orange, which is revenues and expenditures, is the activity to date from July first through March thirty-first. So, essentially, this is our quarter three, revenues and expenditures, and the aggregate summary information, and then what percentage of the budget to actual that is. I then also, just as, again, as a frame of reference, I've taken last year's activity and budget and compared that, grabbed the percentage that we'd either receded or spent to date, and then compared the two. So, really, what I'm looking at is not just this year's activity, how much of a budget we've spent, but what that translates to is in comparison to prior years. And this is a three-page document comparing all of our activity by fund, breaking out by revenues and expenditures, and then the fourth page of the document is where I've taken some highlighted pieces of information that I wanted to point out to you. So, through this presentation, I'll share thirteen points, and the first one, as I just go into it, I'd like to point out, we do not have, excuse me, we do not have a ninety-five to a hundred million-dollar budget. That's the aggregate of all of our funds. There's some duplicated expenditures and whatnot, but I've just, again, as a point of comparison, we do have, when we add up all of our funds, about that much. Generally, we speak about Fund Ten, which is our general fund, and Fund Twenty-Seven, which is our special education. Under our general fund, well, excuse me, number one, as we take a look at all of our activity to date, both on the revenues and the expenditure side, we're right now showing about a seven percent decrease in our current year revenues to date. Expenditures are actually tracking quite well. The reason that our revenues are tracking about seven percent lower than compared to last year is that we have some claims, grant claims, that we need to get in. I shared a little bit about that when I presented the budget information for next year. We're organizing some information that's a little bit in a better fashion, that will allow us to catch up here by month's end, that will get us back up to where we should be for the year. But that does track for a sizable amount of our revenue decreases. But again, expenditures are tracking where they should. As I take a look at number two, our general fund, our revenues, they do appear to be about three percent higher, and I'd like to point out, there might be a very large percentage there, but we're talking low dollars, but a low percent might translate to a high dollar amount. So, that three percent increase in our revenues actually translates to about two-point-nine million dollars. Our general fund revenues are actually tracking within one percent or even less than one percent, but I'm going to explain, number eight, is that what we've done in past years is receipt money to some of our debt service funds. We've not done that to date, which we've receded it all to the general fund, which is allowable. We do have a commingled bank account where all of those activities fall under one bank account. So, our revenues for our general fund are not up by three percent. They're tracking where they should be, because I'll show down below in our debt service funds where we have yet to receive the monies there. But I am happy, as it relates to expenditures, we're within a one percent decrease in comparison to last year at this point in time, and that's good. I think that's very healthy. It makes a lot of logical sense, and again, when I take a look at the budget presentation that I've made about a month ago, this is why I felt very comfortable with the information. I actually did the large majority of this homework over a month ago, and that's why I felt comfortable seeing we're rolling next year's budget forward with changes in revenue, changes in expenditure, because this is good information, and it shows that we're tracking for the year. Large dollar amount, seventy million dollars, we spent about forty million dollars to date. That's where we should be. Fund Twenty-One, and this is... Fund XXI, and this is not, this, this is very typical in school districts, but item number four is under our gift fund, which is Fund XXI. This is where if we receive a donation or, or fundraising, it's not intended to be just for the current year. We do receive it to Fund XXI in our gift fund, but there was not an approved budget back in November. That's not uncommon, because quite often, we don't know what activity. This is not something that's static, that's a reliable revenue or expenditure source. But I will be bringing forward an updated budget that will reflect the actual activity forward in May. So I just wanted to point that out, why we don't have a budget on the expenditure side in our gift fund. Going to go to the second page with Fund XXVII, which is our special education. Again, fairly sizable activity. And right now, our revenues are decreased by about ten percent in comparison to last year. And again, much like our general fund, or overall, we, we are heavily reliant in Fund XXVII on grants. We have two, two, two large grants that fall under this area. They will be caught up by month's end. We're working on that right now. I'm comfortable with that, working with my team. Expenditures, a three percent decrease in our expenditures in our special education area. Again, that's tracking fairly consistent. It's not a, a large deviation from what I would expect. We're being fiscally responsible with our special education dollars. Going to be looking at number seven, which is Fund XXIX. And again, this is Head Start. It's a hundred percent federal grant monies. Our revenues right now are decreased, again, because of grant claims. By month's end, we will be caught up on that. I don't have any concerns, working with that department as well as my team, to get everything aligned and appropriate where we need to claim those monies. The next point is number eight, and this is where I have, at the bottom of page two here, I have three number eight references. And that's where you can see that we have not receded monies as a revenue into these three different areas. Historically, we have. We just have not done that this year. The next amount of money that's coming in through property taxes as well as state aid, we're going to make sure that it does land there. Really, really, it's indifferent at this point in time. Again, we have commingled monies. All of this money goes into one bank account, so it's, it's really indifferent. It's just that we've accounted for it differently this year. I'm going to jump onto the third page, Fund Forty-Six, and this is our Capital Improvement Trust Fund. We will have access to these monies as of July 1st, 2019, so that's, that's upon us. The point here is not necessarily the activity or comparison to last year. We did receive the Barton Elementary sale, and so those monies, we've received them right now in our general fund. It would be my recommendation, Superintendent Kirkergard and myself, we've spoken internally. It would be my recommendation to bring a, a, depositing those funds into our Fund Forty-Six. It was the sale of a large asset, and we should use that, those proceeds towards a future capital project related to facilities. So we will be bringing that forward in the near future. So just wanted to give a heads up on that. That was all.
What about paying off debt from a previous capital project?
Yep. So the way that our debt is currently structured, we don't have the ability to pay it off, similar to what we might have with, personally, with a mortgage or a car loan. We, we don't have that ability to directly pay it off. We do have the ability to set it, money aside in an interest-bearing account. And that is also a, a, a process that we need to bring forward. We did defees debt, which is where we've levied it in the current year. We will be able to set that aside for future years' payments, but we don't have the ability to directly pay it off.
So defeesing debt, you could put, say, the sale of Barton into an account, a savings account, which will draw interest on top of the deposit.
Yep, correct.
And down the road, pay off, when, when a bond is called or whatever, you're defeesing debt on the back end of, say, a ten-year bond.
Correct.
So not only are you gaining interest on the money you're saving, you're paying off your debt early by defeesing on the back end.
Yep, that's accurate.
Andy, could you explain a little further, when a district, and I, and I know I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but I know you're going to have this answer. When a district enters into debt, so for a referendum, so they're, they're actually, those bonds that they're getting, could you explain what non-callable is for those of people that might not understand how that works? I mean, it's different. You know, when you have a loan, some of us maybe pay extra on our mortgage every month to try and get done early, but it's my understanding that's not an option. So could you explain why or how that works for the people who don't understand that?
Yep. So typically, the district has worked with RW Baird as our financial advisors. On the day of a sale, you know, if, if we have a large project we'd like to finance, so incurring whatever debt that might be, we, we get very aggressive interest rates when we sell that. We, we always pay our debt. We're, we're a double-A rated organization through Moody's or Standard &amp; Poor's. And so to get some of those aggressive rates, they'll have what's callable. So just as an example, this, this referendum, we had a nineteen-year repayment. And in working with RW Baird, they would recommend something of having a callable date ten years out, or eight years out, or twelve years out, and that's flexible. But they sell that. And so whoever the, the clients are that buy that debt, they know all of those specifics. And what that means is that at that point in time, when something is callable, it can either, number one, be repaid in, in full, or it could be refinanced if interest rates were more favorable. But we have the ability, our organization has the ability to take advantage of that opportunity. So in the past, we have, on those callable dates, refinanced. We don't have the ability, unless we were to levy large amounts of money to repay that debt, we don't have the ability to generate revenue to completely repay it. We do have the ability to find ways to help curb future-year debt, but not completely repay it at that point in time. So that's really what the callability is. It allows us to refinance or repay. And the advan, again, the advantage of that is to, to get better interest rates, because it allows for market fluctuations and whatnot to take place.
What are our, what are our interest rates on our non-referendum debt and our current referendum debt?
Yeah, so bo, both of them, they're called QZABs and QSCABs, so Qualified Zone Academy Bonds and Qualified School Construction Bonds. Those are federal issues that you have to apply for them to be able to capture very low interest rates. So much of our existing debt, both referendum as well as non-referendum debt, are at zero percent, a half a percent, very, very low. So on the existing debt, we, we have very minimal interest payments over the next ten years.
I knew the answer to that. I just wanted the transparency to be out there of, of some of the things we talk about, but maybe the public doesn't get to see. So, thank you.
Sorry, one more question. So some of our debt is so low, you're saying it's at zero percent. And I understand when that was being taken care of, there's a lot of opportunities for, for districts to do things like that. What's current rate at right now?
So it's, it's hard to tell, because it fluctuates day by day. There are recent sales, which Baird has shared with me, that were as low as three and a quarter percent. I just meant with PMA, who are our reinvestment company that we utilize. And they, they've even shared that interest rates are going to be dropping over the next six to twelve months, what they're projecting. They don't know for sure. But the, the Federal Reserve is thinking about actually declining prime, which will decrease by twenty-five to fifty basis points or a quarter to a half basis point. So they're, they're remaining low. I think the worry is that they might increase and cause some instability in the economy. So three, debt, debt sales within the last month, three and a half percent. Lower than the four and a quarter that we're using in our informational mailings and communications.
Well, better to be conservative.
Yes. Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yep. So spoke about Barton Elementary. That would be a recommendation that the administration would be bringing forward for your approval at some point before June 30th. Fund Fifty, which is our nutritional services. We serve thousands of meal every day. I, I'm very proud of that program, because keeping kids fed is very important, making sure that they have that ability to focus on their learning. Number Ten is, is both on the revenues as well as the expenditure side. Coincidentally, both revenues as well as expenditures are overperforming by four percent. So we're, we're within reason. It does not allow for any fluctuation with profitability or losses for the year. So we're, we're performing well with our Fund Fifty. They're their own little business, if you're not aware of that. So if they operate in a surplus, they get to keep that money and reinvest that into the, the program. If they lose money, they use their fund balance, which they do have fund balance. But the only way that they can be subsidized is if they operate on a surplus deficit and they don't have fund balance. The district has to make them whole. They're operating very well. It's a very well-run program. I'm proud of Abby and her team in doing a good job feeding our students. Little plug for them. Fund Seventy-Three, this is our OPEB trust, and I think at some point, we should probably have a little bit of a discussion about this. This is where, you know, I look back to about ten years ago, when the Department of Public Instruction created this fund. It was new at that point. And they said, "We acknowledge that districts have outstanding liabilities for other retiree benefits, OPEB. And we'd like to allow that mechanism for school districts to be able to start planning ahead, potentially even funding that liability to help curb that, the future payments." So number one is, which is actually number eleven on the list, our revenues through interest are performing well. Number one, we do have a balance in that account, which that is growing and it's actually performing well. And then the second thing is, is that, again, PMA, who we use as our reinvestors for our, our assets, our cash on hand, they've been doing a good job in taking a look at some options that we have that have been just a little bit different in the past. But as you can see, it's almost triple what we budgeted for. So twenty-five thousand dollar budget, seventy-five thousand, thousand dollars interest. It's doing well.
Andy with that one?
Yeah.
Am I correct in saying that we won't have any dispersments for that, from that fund for several more years? Because they, the, they have to be a minimum of fifty-seven, and some of them are grandfathered in based on, on staying on the insurance plan and others. And so this fund will continue to grow until it starts having people access it. Is that correct?
That, that's, I think that's pretty accurate. We do have, and that's my point number twelve, is that we don't have, we've not been recording dispersments to date. There have been expenditures in this fund. So we have existing retirees that are still on the district's health insurance plan under a variety of benefits. You know, there, there are several different benefits that they receive, but we, we do have dispersments out of here. We've, we've not been recording it correctly. I've taken steps, literally just within the last two weeks, when I found this out, that we're, we're going to be changing the way that we account for this activity. There, there, there is activity in this account. There are, though, and again, back to the point of what this fund was set up, is to help districts plan for the future. Again, be fiscally responsible, try to grow a balance, so then when those payments do continue to increase and as we have turnover in our staff, that we're able to plan ahead. Thank you. Last point with our Fund Eighty, which is our community service fund. And I, I primarily look, this is item number thirteen, is that our expenditures are down by one percent. Not what I would like to point out here, but typically, our fund balance in community services grown a little bit. Currently, administration's taking a look at how we might be able to utilize these monies. Because as we take a look at a hundred and twenty thousand dollar levy, as well as fees collected, and how we spend that hundred and twenty thousand dollars over the last several years, we've, we've grown a little bit of a fund balance. Superintendent Kirkergard and I, and as well as the team, are taking a look at how we might be able to utilize that, both with community partners, as well as potentially with our school resource officers. So I just wanted to point that out, because it's, it's important to understand. And this is actually one of the items that are annual meeting. We have to disclose how those monies are being spent. It's a statutory requirement. So I just wanted to point that out, that we're going to be taking a look at that here in the near future. I think that's, that, that's the information. Again, page four is a summary of those thirteen bullets that I just shared verbally. Are there any other questions that you guys might have? I do like this, and again, this is something that I do on a monthly basis. I like that we bring this forward, both for your awareness, as well as the public's awareness, to make sure that we're accountable for our monies. If there's anything different, additional, whatnot, that you might like.
Andy, is this the form that you'll use every quarter? So that there's monthly ones that, that are just there. It just shows the dollar amount. But quarterly, your plan is to use this process going forward?
Yep. I, I shared that at the beginning. And again, this is where a very similar-looking document, and again, I'm going to go to page three, very similar-looking document that I'm going to bring forward with that budget revision, the next year's budget. Again, summary format, just to be able to roll that out and have you guys be familiar, familiar enough with the document, that it'll make sense and that you'll understand what it is. Thank you.
Just wanted to say, excuse me, I just wanted to say I'm appreciative of this. For those of us who grew up in the private sector, fund accounting is, is a foreign beast.
Yeah.
But you do a really nice job of explaining it and putting it into a consistent format, so I look forward to future reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
I appreciate the last page where you, and you've, you've color-coded, highlighted, and numbered, because when we get this board packet, you know, a week in advance, that's nice to be able to read through what your thoughts are. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
To do that. Any other questions, comments on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I just have one final question, Joel.
Yep.
Just to summarize this up, on the, so we're tracking one percent under expenditures and five to seven, or seven percent kind of under revenue. But you do expect the revenue to catch up. So overall, through the scoring of the twelve-month budget, we're, we're on track with.
Exactly.
And, and even one percent under if it's the expenditure, so. And thanks for this information, like others have said.
I move to approve the 2018-19 fiscal year quarter three revenues and expenditures in the aggregate and the payment of claims as presented.
I'll second. Any questions, discussions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Jackson, I think we're going to talk a second reading on revised board policy 345.4A Acceleration and 342.5 Title I. With all seven board members here tonight, we can vote on these. And I would suggest we vote on them separately when that time comes, if someone wants to make a motion, so. Take it away.
So we've had these come before the board previously. We had some discussions during our policy committee and have also had a committee of the whole on one of these policies. Are there any questions, first on the acceleration policy as presented?
Like we said last time, a lot of time went into this one, and Tiffany and Chris especially spent a lot of time working with you and your team, quite a few months working on this one, so.
I could just add, you know, thank you to parents and students who addressed the board, who shared some of their concerns, background experiences. And I really think it was a comprehensive approach to addressing something that needed changing. We, we needed to improve both that GT policy as, as well as our one for acceleration. So there's always a point in board membership in which we really do benefit, not only from administration recommendations, but also those of students and parents. So thank you really to everyone who contributed to, to this. I guess the one point I would, I would identify here is the line, "Separate from the gifted and talented program." So we have a separate gifted and talented program. The board recognizes that many students succeed grade-level proficiencies and benefit from advanced curriculum and a learning environment with peers of similar abilities. So this just goes to speak to the school district's effort to meet kids where they're at and what their needs are, and then help them, you know, progress as rapidly as appropriate for each child. So thank you, Laura, for all the time. You've worked with us on this as well.
You want to make a motion on this one?
Sure.
All right.
I would like to make a motion to approve Board Policy Number 345.4A Academic Achievement with regards to Acceleration.
And I'll second. Any further question, discussion on this? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That policy passes. Our next one is on Title I Programming.
This one represents a revision to the Title I policy that we previously had. It updates it with our current Every Student Succeeds Act and the new requirements of that. And it details out a little more specifically for our district, some of the policies, the procedures that we will engage in with regard to our Title I funding. Are there any additional questions from the board at this time on our Title I program policy?
I move to approve revised Board Policy 342.5 Title I Program.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that policy passes. Thank you very much. Laura. Jen Ginnerman, let's talk about the 2020-2021 school year calendar.
Hi, everyone. I'm excited to be back to talk a little bit more about the proposal for the school year calendar. After our last conversation, I'm just going to bring up a summary of what we did. At the last board meeting, we discussed the proposed calendar one with the school year ending June 9th. From the discussion at our last board meeting, Mr. Kirkergard and myself, we went back and worked with the calendar committee. And what we did is establish a second calendar to bring back to the school board. The changes are outlined here with October having that professional day on the 16th, that will be no additional staff day off. The February professional day was moved from the 12th to the 15th, so instead of two non-student days, there is just one now. And then March spring break, one of the accommodations would be that rather than the full one of the accommodations would be that rather than the full week and then the day after Easter, it would just be one full week for spring break. And with those changes, we were able to put out a second calendar for the staff to give their thoughts and input on as far as which calendar would best meet the needs of our students. And so that's what we have here, just a quick summary. With the changes in October, March, and then around spring break at the end of March. So you'll see that the last day is the 4th of June. This would allow for two professional days that following week for teachers. And we've slotted in potential snow day makeups if we were to need them as far as teacher professional days, if we ended up using other days during the school year based on the snow. We then sent this out to the staff, and all staff got an email asking them to weigh in and look at both the calendars based on their feedback. And we checked it right up until this morning. And so we had 395 staff respond to the survey. And 57% of the staff who responded felt that the calendar two, which is the one ending June 4th, would best be, meet the needs of students. In addition, I did ask if it was one or the other, but I also asked if they felt like, from their perspective, if both calendars met the needs of our students. And so we had 14% who fell in that category, that felt both calendars would meet the needs of our students.
Why on cal, I'm sorry, can you go back a few slides? Why don't we have January and February listed? Am I missing them somewhere?
This is just a, this is a snip. It should, it should be attached in the board docs.
So it's on the other handout, is what you're saying? Okay.
January continues to keep Martin Luther King Day off, but only has one day instead of two. And February has, like Jen said, the February does not have two days off, it just has one day off, and for kids, but no for teachers.
Got it. So I guess one point, since I'm the one who made such a stink the last time, when we look at this for the future, I guess I would just encourage that we have, if we're going to actually have a real calendar committee, I'd like to see a parent from each level, at least invited to. If parents don't want to, that's their business. But I would like to see an elementary parent, a middle school and a high school parent, at least invited, or invite a couple and see if someone can make it. And then I really like the idea that you surveyed. Obviously, 57% of our staff prefer getting out a little sooner and not having graduation quite so late. So I'd like to see that continue, that staff are at least surveyed, potentially even before you bring it to the board. I mean, that speaks a lot more volume to me, to tell me that 57% of all staff like what I'm presenting to you, as opposed to, hey, here's a calendar and this is what we think is great. So that's what I would encourage you to do in the future.
Is this calendar the, the second option of ending on June 4th, similar to what the 1920 school year calendar is that we approved?
There are some differences. The day before Thanksgiving currently for next year, that is a professional day. So right now, on the 2021, that would be a non-school day for students and staff. So there are a few differences.
Martin Luther King Day would be one as well.
Yeah.
Currently, Martin Luther King Day is a professional day. And the proposal has it as a non-school day for everybody.
The end date, though? First week in June for next year?
Correct.
Yep. I just, I hope we have calendars now where we can go for the next 10 years. That this is the way we like to do it. Or, and maybe we don't need a survey or a committee every single year, every other year, but, you know, maybe every five or six years. Then, and hopefully it doesn't take so much to put together a calendar. And if this is what teachers like and students like and parents like, then we should be good to go for a while, hopefully. And thanks for surveying. And thanks to all the teachers and staff who responded to the survey.
And the calendar committee, we, we always had like great conversation, but it's clear that if they were taking, speaking with the people in their buildings and that sort of thing, that we didn't get a full representation of everyone's, you know, voice and thoughts around the calendar.
Yep.
So one of the things we'll have to talk about moving forward is just how that calendar affects the school calendar, because sometimes that start of the school year kind of speeds things up. And, and then, you know, like with holiday breaks and stuff, that's a little hard to juggle sometimes. But we can tackle that as we go in the future.
Before you vote, I just wanted to say thank you to Jen. Jen did a significant amount of work throughout the whole process. And I very much appreciate everything you did, Jen. Thank you.
Can you remind me with all of our snow days this year, I know we added a Friday back on, but at the end of this school year, right, we extended some high school days that were supposed to be half days for testing. What else did we do at the end of this school year?
The traditional exam days were, are now full days. The high school administrative staff is working to develop a modified exam schedule
Yep.
to work within those days. The March, I think it was the 2nd, was a professional day, was now a student day.
We did not add another day at the end of the year.
No, we did not. We have professional days as far as work that we're going to be doing as, with the teaching staff, but not for students.
Question I had, because when Kewaskom had to add some days, they had to have board action to, to add that day. I noticed our motion tonight is, we say the start date is this and the end date is that. So when we added a day, it didn't matter, because we're approving the start and the end. So in this calendar, if our motion is to have it be the end of, you know, June 4th, if we do have to add the 7th, 8th, 9th, because it's snow, we will have to have board action to do that. Not a big deal, but just a question that came up this year on why we didn't have board action when we added that March day, for instance.
Yeah. And that was a piece that we worked, you know, around of looking at what is a student day, and when the teachers were already coming on that Monday. So whether it was more of a work day or a professional day, that change wasn't much different.
One of the areas that we usually struggle in is with the high school, to make sure we have enough hours for the high school. And so for next year, we are looking to see if we can't have the day that we have A C T test. That's an important day. And West Bend, like most of our neighbors, do not have school for 9, 10, and 12 on that day. And as a result, we can't count that as a day of school. So that's not considered, even though our juniors are there, that's not considered a day of school for the high school on A C T day. And so what we would like to, for next year, and I think some of our neighbors are doing that as well, is that we'll have that as a technology day. We know that well in advance. We can get the word out, this is what we're going to do on the day of the A C T. And so we'll be able to count that as a school day for next year for the high school, where this year it was not. That's a lot easier than doing it at the spur of the moment on a snow day, because we haven't, we're not one-to-one, we don't have all the technology available. And it's hard for us to, at the last minute, have a technology day if we haven't planned for it. But there's no reason why we can't plan for that day for our A C T day.
There could be some other options too, as far as like freshman counseling, you know, academic career planning meetings and that sort of thing. So.
Great.
Any other questions on this calendar?
We do need a motion on this.
Okay, I'll do it.
Who's waiting for you to do it?
I knew you all were. I'm like, nah, okay, I'll do it. All right. Since I'm the one who made all the stink, I move to approve the start and days for the 2020-21 school year to be September 1 of 2020 and June 4 of 2021, respectively.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions, discussion on the 2020-2021 school year calendar? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
All the team, thank you very much.
I will let them know. And also, some of our next steps is putting this on the website and meeting with the private schools in our area, just to work in partnership as much as possible, and making sure that, you know, as we're planning ahead, that we're all moving together. So those are our next steps.
Great. Thank you very much. Onto a fun discussion here tonight. We're going to talk about the Trail Shark program. And this is Rob. Rob?
Rob Loomis. Thank you for, thank you for the work letting me come in tonight. My name is Rob Loomis. I'm a technical teacher over at the high school. Myself, I'm the head coach of the Washington County Trail Sharks, along with Gary Dern. One of my assistant coaches over in the corner over there. And we are working on trying to become a club sport for the high school, so that our students that are involved in the program can, at the end of the four years, get our student license. We've been in existence, let's try to, this is a classic game. We are one of roughly 25 states in the nation that have joined this program called NICA, the National Indigenous Classic Cycling Association in California. It's a nonprofit organization. And it's really about getting kids on bikes and getting kids back involved in sports. A lot of what we attract are non-bone, stiff type of kids. We attract the kids that don't necessarily, aren't able to join a team, a traditional school club, but they want to be able to compete or get involved in athletics as a, as an individual, but still be part of the club and team and still, if it's a side they want to compete, be able to compete as a team, but more as a, very similar across the country. Some portions attract students that are not. Our mission, or NICA's mission, and the one that we share with them, is to make, is to make sure that we are working with inclusivity, equality, strong minds, strong bodies, strong characters. It's not just about the athletic experience for students. It's about making them a better athlete, a better person, both physically and mentally. Some of the, some of the states that have come on, we were states, I want to say we were state 14, and I believe after this year, they're bringing three more states, and I think there's going to be 30 states in the program as a whole. We are not W I A A. We are sanctioned through, through NICA in California. Really quick history on us a little bit. For myself, I played two years of high school sports. I got injured. I wasn't able to pass a physical, so I found a bike instead. We have a program in Wisconsin called Wars, Wisconsin Off-Road Racing Series. It's been around, this will be its 27th year. I've been racing for all 27 of those years. Me, myself, and Gary and I, the coaches, we've got over, right around 100 years of racing experience and cycling experience. So that's what we bring to the kids as well. When I started with Wars, there were roughly 100 people that would show up at a race. Now there's over 1,000 people that show up at a race. When NICA got started, we had six kids on the team. We were up over 40 kids on the team. As a whole, for the state, their first race, we had just around 100 kids racing their first race day on the state championship. And here now, we should be pushing right around 900. It is, it is coming into our 7th year now. So we've had some massive growth. It's been absolutely fantastic to watch it go this far. Lifelong sport is the other big thing that we work with. The fact that kids can continue on the cycling, both at a competitive level or non-competitive level. We also work with the students and the parents to understand that we want them to be multi-sport athletes. Cycling is just one of hundreds of different things that there, that are out there and available to them. And we believe the fact that being involved in multiple sports will increase their longevity in athletics, not that they're breaking down or wearing down certain portions of their body or run over or. We work with the students to set goals, both short-term goals, long-term goals. We state our goals as coaches and as a coaching staff. So we have the kids write a goal statement at the beginning of the season, see where it's at, track it. When they meet their short-term goal, great, let's move on, go to the next one. And then long-term goals could be for a season, or it could be even longer than that. One thing I did not touch on, I really, to touch on really quick, is the fact that we are both middle school and high school. We're the first state in the nation to involve middle school students. NICA came to us with just high school. We said, we're missing a huge pool of kids that need something to do. So we got them involved before they find out the driver's licenses on the, and join telling a bike as well. You can compete or not compete, which is another big thing that we, that we explain to the parents and the kids, that if they just want to be part of a, part of a, part of a team, part of a program, great. We have the most introductory and brand new kids on bikes, and then we also have station. So it's a massive variety, and it's awesome watching our super talented kids work with kids that are new to bikes and vice versa. And there's a lot of team support. Usually what happens is kids that aren't sure if they want to race or not, go to a race. We have them come and watch. By the next race, they're, it's, it's fantastic. Our middle school numbers right now are huge. So we started very, very young. We started with a couple of, a couple of high school students. And we noticed that as soon as kids turned 12 years old, we've been getting them on the team. So this year will be our first year we have a pretty substantial amount of freshman athletes, which will be fantastic. We are Washington County, so a lot of the programs that's new, they're club sports. We, we, we live in Washington County. We have a specific West Bend high school team right now. Once you have five athletes in front of the school, you need to form a specific team. The rest of the kids still race, compete with the Washington County. This year, we might have a West Bend team. We may also have a Slidesteam, but go all new race under a specific, under the Washington County. Our coaching parent involvement started out very, very slow. It has grown, which has been fantastic. I've gotten a lot of new coaches over the last couple of years, which is going to help the longevity of the programs involved. My kids are in it. My coach came out after six years. I might still be, I might still send a coach out after six years. I don't know. But the parent involvement has gotten very, very high. And we're getting a lot of parents that have cycling as a background, and they're going to go through training as well. So to speak on training really quick, there's a three level, three levels of coaching. And our level three coach, so as a level three coach, we have to go through certain liability courses, CE, or concussion training. We have to go through first aid, we'll do this first aid. We have to go through risk management training, both annually and bi-annually training, in order to keep our certifications in. And there's certain CEUs that we have to maintain over the course of years as well. And that's all governed by NICA. Their rules and regulations, in my opinion, are actually fantastic. The one that I like, I want my parents to most about is that students or athletes cannot have caffeine, I mean, un-raced that, absolutely zero caffeine, because they, cycling is a sport where they can do performance and drugs. They don't want, it's getting involved in that at all. So if they do, if they are found with any type of, 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 a lot of them are caffeinated. So it's making those companies also turn around and say, here's electrolytes, who would have a little bit of electrolytes without the caffeine? So it's one of the things that they've been working with as well, to keep kids safe, working well within the parameters of physical abilities. Our season, we have a fall season, so right about now, this is where we start to do our kickoff programs. In early May, we will have our first meeting for the team. Gary and I will be going to our leadership summit on April 26 and 27. And then we have a kickoff meeting, and our practices start in July. We can start practice since July 1. And then our season goes through mid-October. We typically practice two, three times a week, at some of the local parks, and then Pleasant Valley, which is towards Bratton, Newfane, and Glacier Blue Hills. And then there are five races over the course of the season. Obviously, we go as far south as Waterloo. And in the past, we've gone as far north as Haverhill. So, again, two to three times a week. We work a lot on skills development. So this year, one of the things that we're going to be incorporating with the kids is, some of the kids, they just need skills. They need to learn how to ride their bikes. Most people know how to ride their bikes, we teach them how to ride their bikes, and then we teach them how to ride their bikes safely. And then we've got the kids that are really changing to race and really wanting to race well. So we're going to kind of blend our practices for those that are looking for skill enhancement. And we're, and we're pushing to the race program a little bit more, so that it's getting more towards the performance and have player, high school athletic support. But our biggest thing, like any sport, is safety. We've only had a couple of incidents within our team. As a whole, the incident report, because David Spence is very, very well, kids are, kids and coaches are covered by insurance through NICA, which is fantastic. It's part of our cost, it's a, we are funded, she's been, her insurance company, they were sort of J W speaker, and they donate a couple thousand dollars to us every year to help us with equipment and other needs. Talked a bit about that already. Race days, it's a weekend, it's a weekend treat. So we get there typically Saturday morning, we do our pre-ride. Some people will camp on site, those who tend to eat and stay at the hotel together as a team. And then Sunday is race day. So race day starts at 8:30 in the morning and goes through about 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and then everybody heads home. We've grown big enough over the, over the course of the last few years. I know one of the things that we've been talking about in leadership some this year is to have a dual race weekend, where we race both Saturdays and Sundays, because the amount of kids on trails is getting pretty high, and they want to make sure that people stay safe. All riders are cheered, which is absolutely fantastic. The loud, the last kid that comes through the, through the finish line gets just as many cheers as the kid that comes through the finish line first. And it is absolutely fantastic to watch the smiles on the spaces. And again, we work with really being safe. Courses are very, very well marked. And there's always a course marshal that is sweeping the course to make sure that everybody's clear on the course at the end of the day. We have both team scoring. We have male scoring and we have female scoring. Middle school. Um, middle school is scored separate from the high school, and then everything is broken down into categories as well. So middle school categories, freshman, sophomore, junior, university, varsity. In order to race at the varsity level, you have to be invited into the varsity level. Uh, so you have to, you have to compete at a certain level, at a GAB level, with certain, uh, with certain finishes and points in order to get, um, brought up down to the varsity level the following year, or to potentially sometime in the middle of the year. Um, cost for kids, if they're going to race, their cost is roughly four hundred dollars per activity. Uh, if they don't want to race, they're somewhere right around a hundred, a hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars per activity. Uh, so it depends on what their, what their point is at that. So they pay for, they pay a sixty-five dollar registration fee towards NICA and a forty dollar race fee as well. Uh, and then as coaches and ride leaders, all my coaches and ride leaders have to go through background checks at a fair minimum to make sure the student athletes are out there with, um, the proper adult involvement. Uh, if there are any issues, if students come to us and say, "We can't afford this," the state has, for the, our NICA, the NICA program has a scholarship fund as well. So really, we should not have any kids, they don't, if they want to be involved, they have the ability to be involved. And we have bikes. So some of our program volunteers, so we have to pass the background check, first aid CPR, I talked about that already, so we'll do that. Uh, some of our information on insurance coverage, uh, and then risk management. Again, we don't ever want to see kids get hurt, and again, it is almost inevitable, uh, with any sport. Cycling is not any different, I've had my fair share. Uh, some more of the risk management pieces. Um, we get our rules and regulations through NICA, so it's not, it's not anything that we have to make up or come up with. I don't have any set of rules or, uh, what we teach. So we would like to offer that to students at this point, that they could potentially, you know, be a racing.
Very cool. Thank you for the, the presentation, and thank you for your contributions to this team. I, I will ask superintendent, what are the next steps in this?
You know, the next step is, um, we would bring it back to board for approval. Um, it has the endorsement of both east and west athletic director, as well as both east and west principals. And so I have, um, did the research, uh, visited, and so one of my biggest concerns was to make sure that we had a progression succession part. And so Robbie decides to, to be done, who's going to take over? And we think that that's in place, because what we don't want to do is to have a club sport this year, and then next year we don't have the right people. And so we, we're very confident that it's a program that will be around for many years to come, and so very fortunate to have someone as dedicated to, to be our head coach. And so we would put that on the agenda for next month, to have official recognition as a club sport with no district contributions, either in the form of coaching and/or salaries or, or supplies, as strictly a club sport with no, um, no compensation.
Two comments. First of all, thank you, both of you coaches, for all your time and for the donations and for everything. Um, second of all, I would love to, um, whatever day we decide to put this on the agenda, I would love to see your riders here to, like, hear us make the announcement that it'll, you know, that'd be lovely. So please invite them and have them here, it'd be great.
Last time we went to a city council meeting, we had just a couple people show up.
We can set extra chairs, we're all about the extra chairs. Tim doesn't mind at all in the back, he's happy to set up more chairs. Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
I think it sounds great. I, I, you know, I think about my own kids. I don't know if my daughter's going to make the tennis team or the basketball team, or if she'll even want to. And this is just another way to get kids involved, and it's a, you know, like you say, a lifelong sport. Um, I would think, you know, safety is obviously my number one thing, but I would think it's no different than football, you know, or whatever else, you take a risk playing any sport you play. So I think, I, I like the fact that this organization really sets, sets a group like this up for success, so.
You know, I talked about that thing, same one of the other key things that we do is students have to wear helmets. Students and coaches have to wear helmets, even when they're not associated with the team. Uh, and actually, I'm going to kick one student out of the team, but if any of you see one of our kids on a random Sunday afternoon riding their bike to the grocery store and they don't have a helmet on, and I find out about that, or NICA finds out about that, they're all not going to be able to.
Yeah. Great.
Just a quick comment, and, and our next board meeting is an early meeting in May, and that's a short meeting as well. So, so we encourage and like to have the bikers here, but you don't have as much time, because that's also the, um, recognition. And so, so we want to make sure that we, we provide the opportunity, but, but know it's going to be a shorter meeting as well.
We can discuss that. I don't think it makes a difference if it's beginning of May or into May, does it? Okay, we'll discuss that and let, obviously let you know. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Hey, Rob, Rob, while you're here, and this might be unrelated, but did I see you recently featured in your work with Project Lead the Way and the collaboration we had at the hospital with the?
I helped out, um, a little bit, with, I helped out with Patty a little bit.
With, right, with?
Yeah, her kids came down by me to learn, uh, a computer program that they don't work with, uh, that my architecture classes and my civil engineering classes do work with. So I gave them a quick snippet of how to get stuff together, and then did some help with some cost estimates and stuff for the hospital.
And improving the efficiency of the emergency department, right? So I guess, I think Rob's a good example of how much extra work our teachers do and all their innovative strategies, and how much you overlap between helping the kids with Trail Sharks and then Project Lead the Way, which is really Patty Noonan's area, but we really appreciate that. And then I was lucky, you were my neighbor, and anytime I had a flat tire or a maintenance issue, the kids knew, go see Mr. Willmuss. So thank you for that. If I never said, "Thank you for your maintenance on our bikes," I appreciate it.
Thanks for taking care of the Larson.
That's what you get in a small town, so thank you very much. We'll move on to our committee reports. We had a committee of a whole meeting on April ninth, where we, uh, sat here at the board table, but heard a great presentation from Dave Hamelmann and the compensation committee. And that was just a week ago tomorrow, and appreciate all the work that committee's done, and we'll look forward to a, kind of hopefully a resolution to that, so it can be kicked off next school year if all goes well. Uh, Mr. Sweger?
There was a policy committee meeting held tonight at six PM. There was one item on the agenda, it's, uh, formerly policy number three forty-two point sixty-two, uh, but we're looking to revise it to three forty-two point seven, and the title is Services for English Language Learner. And after review by the policy committee, a draft will be presented to this board for consideration. That's all I have.
Great, thank you very much. Before we move on to our oaths of office, it is our final board meeting for Tiffany Larson and Ken Schmidt tonight. They were duly elected three years ago to the school board, and I have gotten to know both of them just in the past two years for, for me. It's been, uh, a pleasure working with both of you. Uh, as Tiffany just showed with Rob, I mean, you always have a pulse on the schools and on what's going on around town and in our, in our school buildings and with our kids, and always, always have had your heart in the right place. And, and every decision you make, as we say, is always for the kids, and that's, that's, um, always been Tiffany along the way. And then Ken, I, I would say, Ken, I got to know you, I would say, pretty well during our superintendent dinners, when we were interviewing for our new superintendent. We had three nights where we had dinners together, right in a row. Luckily, they changed the food up for us, but, uh, before those dinners and after dinners, had, um, great conversation with Ken. Um, one thing I always appreciate about Ken is, is before you vote one way or another, whether you agree with me or the rest of the board, you always tell us why you are voting the way you're voting. And, uh, there are other school boards, uh, not too far from us where that's not happening right now. And, and as you talk about, everyone talks about transparency. I mean, that's, that's why you're elected, and, and you're here to serve the community and, and the taxpayers who elect you, and to explain why you're voting however it is you're voting, and I've always appreciated that, and commend you for that. So personally, it's been great to get to know you guys. As I say to our retirees every year, don't be shy. If you want to come back to the district, you are welcome here anytime, whether that's to, uh, come drive Don or Deb nuts with, uh, goofy conversations, or, uh, school board-related stuff, or if it's simply to come into a classroom to read a book, or have lunch with our kids, whatever it is. You're always welcome, and I hope to continue to see you around our school district.
I, I would echo Joel's comments. Um, there is, and, and I would challenge any of you to argue this point, there is not a board member who does more research on a topic than one Tiffany Larson. And I will absolutely miss Tiffany saying, "Back in two thousand and four, this is how we did it," um, because she had the ability to make us understand the history of many decisions or allow us to, um, understand perhaps what past boards were thinking. And I would like to say thank you to Ken, who has, in many meetings, made me think about things much differently than the way I decided as I rolled in the door, and Ken might have a different opinion. And what I really appreciate about Ken is even when he was about to say something that might have been unpopular, he let us all know it was going to be unpopular, but just let us know it was there, so.
You may not always agree with this, but, and then, and then nine times out of ten, we agree with you. So that's, that was always funny, too.
So, thank you both. I know that, you know, we've all put in a lot of time, and, and there was a lot of, um, additional hours in the last, you know, two years. And I thank you both for your commitment and, um, your willingness to run, because obviously not a lot of people are willing to put their necks out and do that. So thank you.
I'll be brief, because I agree with everything Joel and Nancy have already said, but Tiffany is the reason why I am sitting here, because her passion was what led me to realize how important, um, a role this is. And, uh, she really was a good lea, a good leader for me, and I do always look to her for, like Nancy said, her, uh, incredible research and history of the district. And, and I also appreciate Ken's honesty. It's, it takes a lot of courage to be willing to speak up when you're not sure if you're going to be agreed with or not. And we do agree more often than you think, just like Joel said.
I'll just also echo these, uh, these remarks. As one of the more junior members of the, uh, of the school board, thank you to both. And Tiffany, your dedication to educational excellence is unparalleled. And, um, I hope you know that, because I think to you it comes naturally, but it's something that's, was very, very valued by the district and by this, by this board, so thank you. And Nancy, you're, you're right. I thought I'd be prepared for policy committees with that much material, and someone would bring in about that much material. But thank you. That was always very, very useful and great, especially to a, to a newer, newer member. And, um, Ken, I agree with the thoughts of the others as well. Appreciate the fact that you helped us explore many different sides and many different dimensions to an issue. And you're, you've always been a guardian of both educational excellence and the taxpayer at the same time, and that's, that's a tough balance. It's, it's not easy, but you approach those tough issues with, uh, with courage and with clarity, and I really appreciate that.
I'll just be real quick, too. It was nice getting to know all the seven members of the board, and especially Ken and Tiffany, three years of service, all the countless hours. We'll just expound on Joel's story about hiring the superintendent. It was an extensive search, not only three days of meetings, um, final search, uh, but a lot of even prep and interview. We cull the field down from, I think, seventy-four to nine, then to three. And I just want to say, we come from different backgrounds, um, but we were unanimous to select the superintendent from South Dakota, the number one superintendent. We were fortunate to get him. I thank you for that process, and I thank Ken and Tiffany for their service.
I remember, right, we all sat outside, and it was after all the interviews, and Ken was the first one who said, "I think we better go with Don Kirkigard." You, I think he was, the first one to say that, so. Uh, this, this board has two big shoes to, four big shoes to fill over there. It won't be filled by, uh, just Aaron and Paul alone, it'll, it'll be all of us. And so, uh, thank you very, very much for your service to the district and the community. Any final words from either one of you? If not, that's okay. You don't have to, but.
Um, it's been a great honor, you know, it's having your kids in the district. You certainly have skin in the game, but once you join the board, you have sixty-five hundred plus kids in the district. It's certainly not just about your own, it's about making sure that, uh, that you're present for all of them. I've loved the orchestra concerts, the band concerts, uh, the, the Made for Me at Fair Park. There's so many great activities going on daily, and you don't have to be a part of the school board in order to attend these and, and to get a feel for what our coaches and our teachers are doing on a regular basis. I know I had the good fortune of, when I first started on the board, Annette Ziegler, Supreme State Court Justice, said, "Tiffany, uh, people don't expect you to be perfect as an elected official. They expect you to work hard." And I feel like everybody on this board is, is working really hard to meet the needs of not only the taxpayers, but Gary Vos, my mentor from Kettle Moraine, said, "Your number one constituent is the one who cannot vote. Your number one constituent is the child, it's the student. That's who you're representing, and, and that's who's, the decision that you make, you are making for that constituent, that of the child." And I think Jacob Schwekel said it well, uh, a couple weeks ago on the paper as well. "When parents vote, when community members vote, remember you're voting for those of us who can't vote." So it's been a great honor to represent those students, sixty-five hundred plus great students, keeping in mind, too, the nonpartisan nature of a school board member. We're not here to advocate, uh, for politics or religion. We're here to advocate for children and public schools and the relationship that they have to our community. And I've always said, a strong community is a cornerstone to strong schools and vice versa. You have this very strong symbiotic relationship between building community and building strong public schools. Finally, I think we're at a great point with our school board. It's the first time in ten years that I feel like people are here, not for politics, they're here for children. They're here for our community, they're here for our schools. It gives me great relief to know that there's not, uh, this separate agenda perhaps, but that there is a sincere desire to continue moving our district forward. Very grateful for our administrative staff, for Laura, Dave Hamelmann came to us, Andy Sarnow in finance, and like Kurt said, Joel, to have Don Kirkigard here is just the icing on the cake. It's wonderful to have somebody so well-respected and still willing to put the time, the hard work, the humility into this position. So Paul, Aaron, knowing you all were willing to run, it just made it so easy for me to say, you know, my three years, I consider it dog years. Every year on the board is equal to about seven years in real life. So, uh, I, I've done my time, but I'm so grateful for those of you who are willing to continue.
Good, thank you.
I would like to, turn the mic on here. Like to thank the West Bend School District for giving me the opportunity to serve. That being said, I have to say that serving on the board was a little bit more than I anticipated. There were more meetings, there was a lot more material to digest than the casual observer probably, uh, could, uh, think of. Yet I'm thankful that I was able to balance commitments to my family, work, and, uh, a number of other things as well. I didn't agree with, many times with the rest of you. I was the only no-vote many times, at least this past year. Um, there are reasons for that. I'm deeply concerned, even though I disagreed with you, and, uh, I had my reasons. And I was deeply concerned about the students, deeply concerned about the district, taxpayers. I take, you know, my responsibility seriously to represent all of them well. Concerned about integrity, concerned about values, concerned that our, our school district does, uh, reflect the values of our, uh, our district and the voters and so on. I will continue to. I, um, don't think this is the last you'll hear from me as such. I try to keep things short, sweetened to the point. Uh, maybe not so sweet sometimes. Yes, I'm concerned about finances, concerned about what's taught, taught in the classroom, the quality of education. And I hope you as a school board, um, and, uh, Mr. Fisher and Mrs. Dove will, uh, practice good oversight and, uh, uh, keep in mind that you're representing the entire district as such. Thank you again for letting me serve, and, uh, I wish you well.
Thank you. We wish both of you well, and like I said, don't be shy, that's okay. Uh, Deb, I think I'm going to turn it over to you for our oath of office of our two new board members, or Tony? Tony? Great. Come on up. This is Aaron Dove and Paul Fisher. What's that? I don't know, do you want to? Do we, do you want us to stay right here? Okay? I don't want to be in a picture in the paper tomorrow, so. Go ahead.
Please raise your right hand and look to the left for me. I, Erin Dove, having been duly elected, having been duly elected, to the Board of Education of West Bend Joint School District Number One, the Board of Education of West Bend Joint School District Number One, and have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will support the Constitution of the Constitution of the Constitution of the Constitution, and will faithfully discharge, and will faithfully discharge, the duties of said office, the duties of said office, to the best of my ability, to that the Constitution of the Constitution will be upheld. Please raise your right hand and look to the left for me. I, Paul Fisher, having been duly elected, to the Board of Education of West Bend Joint School District Number One, who has not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the Constitution of the Constitution, and will faithfully discharge, the duties of said office, to the best of my ability...
Congratulations. One of those lines said something about, "But have not entered into the duties yet," and that's because it's not until next Monday, April 22nd, that you are officially officially a school board member. But we just did the oath of office, and at our first meeting in May, which is the early meeting, we'll elect new officers, and we will have a very short meeting that week, but get you up on the board here, and we'll go from there. Superintendent's report.
So I asked Jen to join me. We're going to start with a little bit of the engagement survey, and so I know you have received the entire survey and the results, but we wanted to highlight a few things. And again, I'd like to thank Jen for all of her hard work. She really was one of the main features, or the main feature, of our engagement survey, and I think even did a song and dance routine. Is that correct, as far as a video message that goes out with that? And so, just wanted to share some numbers with you regarding the engagement survey. We had seventy percent response, which really is a significant number. Very pleased with the response. Of that, of those seventy percent, seventy-seven percent said they would remain within the West Bend School District for at least another two years. So quite good support of our district. Seventy-two percent said they're proud to tell others where they work, and seventy-six percent had overall job satisfaction within the West Bend School District. Compared with other organizations, our overall benefits package is forty-nine percent, so it's not fifty percent. It's close to it, and that's something that we need to work with our staff to show them what our overall benefits package really consists of, whether that's a bigger package or at least a better idea of what the package is all about. Forty-eight percent said they're paid fairly for their job. Sixty-four percent said that they receive enough communication from the district administration, and that's something we need to work on. We would like that to be seventy-five, eighty, ninety percent feel that they're getting the adequate information from us. Fifty-five percent said they are satisfied with their current workload. And then at the end, we looked at some considerations for the district's improvement plan. We want to review, revise our mentor program. We think we need to enhance our communication, review the compensation comparables, and look at a compensation package, which Mr. Hamelman is working at with you right now, and then prioritize elements of the administrator's role and gather more information from teachers regarding workload. And so, those are some things. We talked, I think, at our last committee of the whole. There was a comment at the very end about the high school. Some have five sections, some have six sections. I am going to bring something to you to try to put some consistency with that for the next school year, not for the nineteen-twenty year, but for the twenty-twenty-one school year. And so, there's a lot more information, and Jen can certainly answer questions better than I, but are there any specific questions about the employee engagement survey?
Was this done last year in its same format, so?
No, this was the first year. So last year, we did not do one. Prior to that, there was one done with a different company, and our goal last year was to find a company that could serve as not only the survey tool, but our data dashboard, and so that's where we partnered with Qualtrics. So myself and a few others worked with that company to develop the questions and then deploy that to our staff, and our plan would be to deploy this every two years. Next year, what we will do is work on a parent satisfaction survey, and all this information will be funneled back to the district continuous improvement plan as well as the school improvement plans.
Jen, how many questions total were there in this survey? Do you remember?
No, like, less than thirty, and, I mean, it took less than seven minutes. We really fine-tuned the questions based on research of what would, you know, validate an engaged employee and that sort of thing. So we had, the first block was just general information about each staff member, as far as their job, how long they've been in the district. The second block of questions was about just overall district, and then the third block was about building. And so I'll be working with the building principals to roll out that information and help guide their next steps.
So you said next year you hope to do a parent survey?
Parent satisfaction survey. So in the past, buildings had been doing them all together, and then some of them weren't. We just had some inconsistency, so the building principals and I will work together to deploy that next year, and then we can use that opposite of this staff satisfactory survey.
And I know when my children were very young, like elementary age, they would also kind of have a survey. Do we still do that to the students?
Teachers are surveying staff and maybe parents as part of their feedback to themselves.
And I feel like this was kind of one that all the students received, and I just, my comment to that was just going to be, we need to be, make sure that we're using language that the children understand, because I remember my little elementaries coming home saying, "I didn't even know what that question meant. I didn't know how to, you know, how to answer." So that would just be my only criticism, just that, you know, obviously you can use some language with high schoolers that a fourth grader might not understand, so.
One of the things we are looking at is a exit survey per school, and so when they leave elementary as a fourth grader, tell us a little bit about your experience, obviously in terminology that a fourth grader can understand. When they leave Silverbrook, do the same thing. When they leave Badger, do the same thing. When they leave the high school, the same information, and so that if we can get some data from our students as they're exiting the facility, we think that that's good information for us to have.
I would agree. That's great.
And why every two years for the employment survey versus every year? Is it expense, or is that just traditional?
No, I mean, some people do it different ways. Some do it annually. Some do it at the beginning of the year, end of the year. You know, some of it is really taking a step back and looking at capacity and being able to use that information and really make a difference, you know. So the communication piece is one of the things we'll be looking at, and so I wouldn't anticipate that in, you know, three months or even six months, people feel, "Oh, they're so much more informed." We want to really give time to be putting thoughtful, strategic actions in place to really see the improvement.
I guess the other comment I would make is the top hundred-and-fifty businesses, places to work, came out in the Milwaukee Journal, and Mutual, and Delta Defense were both in the top twenty. Moskego, Norway, Menominee Falls were both in the top twenty. It's not beyond reason for school districts to be a top place to work, and I certainly think that the West Bend School District has that within its ability, and it's certainly something to strive for.
And that's definitely, I know from other systems, that you pay to be a part of that evaluation, and that in some places is a board goal, you know, to become the top. So if that's something that people want to proceed in the future, then that would be a choice. This would be supplemental and support that, you know, but they will ask some of the same questions.
And I would think of it less as being incentivized to be a part of this hundred-and-fifty, and more just when you put out an employee satisfaction, you're at ninety percent instead of seventy percent as a top place, you know, as a satisfaction in the workplace type thing.
Great. Thank you.
The only other comment that I would make would be, in May, I would ask the board to consider a committee of the whole, where we could go and view all of the facilities in the West Bend District. I know that some of you have been to all of the buildings on a regular basis. Some of you maybe have never been over to Rolfs, or you've never been to Decora or someplace else, and so I think that would be important. We'd ask Dave to be, Ross to come along with us. He can show what has been done in the past, what's scheduled to be done. You know, one of the things that they talk about is the lack of deferred maintenance. I really want to emphasize that we have a million-and-a-half-dollar budget for maintenance. We have three million dollars' worth of maintenance requests, and so that, could we have fixed the shower earlier? Certainly we could have, or could have something else, but I am telling you that the deferred maintenance is not something that has been overlooked. It's just there's not the dollars available to do all of the things that need to be done on a regular basis. And so as we go through and look at our facilities, we would show you some of the projects that we're working on, some of the projects that are next on our agenda, and some that we think should be done, but they're going to have to be seven years down the road, because there's no funding available for the next seven years for that to happen. Along with that, we would also take a look at our twenty-five-year plan. That twenty-five-year plan should be a working document, not a stagnant document, and so we're asking principals to review the twenty-five-year plan. Mr. Ross is reviewing it with us, and then would like to come up with new suggestions for the board to consider as far as reprioritizing. This one is taken care of. It can be off the list. This one, one of the examples is the bleachers at the high school are not even on the twenty-five-year plan. They probably should be, okay? Whether they are number three, or seven, or twenty-three, I'm not suggesting that, but I think we need to take a thorough look at our twenty-five-year plan, and I will ask Deb to send out a document for you to look at dates. The question is, is there a date that we can, everybody come together and hopefully, I don't want you to have to miss work, but it's nice to be able to see the school when we have kids in the school as opposed to at night. If we do it at night, then it's really not any different than if we do it in the summer. And so if at all possible, would like to take a day to look at our facilities, and knowing that we have, you know, nine facilities, you know, it's going to take a while for that to happen. It's not going to be a two-hour board meeting. It's going to be a lengthy one, but I think it would be a very rewarding one for all the board members, and so that would be one. And then at some point in time, not too far down the road, we really need to look at, you know, the referendum did not pass, and that was what the people voted for, but that doesn't eliminate some of the needs that were on the referendum. And so, the board is going to need to have to figure out what is next. What do we do for Jackson? How do we make that ADA compliant? How do we do some of the things to improve the infrastructure at the high school? I don't have the answers, but I think that's a discussion that the board needs to make sooner rather than later, so we knew, decide which one of those priorities are first and which ones are second, and kind of go from there.
Great. I think that's a great idea. And then, communication to the public, I think, is another thing we maybe need to, as a board, do some brainstorming on. You know, I remember that we reviewed the twenty-five-year plan with Dave Ross. We approved his annual budget, which included, for instance, resurfacing the tennis courts. Well, we resurfaced the tennis courts, and people in our community are in an uproar, because why did we do that? Well, it was on the plan. It was budgeted for, and it was executed on, and quite, I'm a tennis player, and quite frankly, had we not done it, we wouldn't have had a tennis season this season. So how can we, and I'm not asking for an answer tonight, but how can we show our community, here's what our plan is, here's what our budgets are for, and here's what we're executing on? Obviously, it's not going to happen here at a board meeting, because this gentleman didn't even stay till the end of the board meeting, and our local blogger didn't even stay till the end of the board meeting. So what are ways where we can communicate to the public what we're doing, so that we don't have a member of the community stand in front of us just ticked off about the money we're spending? So just something to think about. That's my soapbox. Any other further comments or questions?
You know, one of the things, and Andy presented earlier on our quarterly budget update, Andy has the ability to put words, the budget in a understandable fashion, and so we will reach out to Andy to ask him to help us disseminate some of that material to the public, whether it's in the form of a press release, of a whatever. I think we can do a great job of getting some of that information out, you know. When we talk about our interest rates, to know that our current interest rates are zero to two percent, I'm not saying I wish they weren't there at all. I wish the referendum debts were all gone, but it's not like we're paying a loan shark amount of money on our current referendum, okay? And so, but I don't know if everybody understands that, and so those are things that we'll truly look to our finance department to have, help us get that information out so that the public understands a little bit better than it is.
Great. Thank you very much. Anything else for Superintendent Kirkigard? If not, our board meeting calendar, we've got a regular board meeting on May 6th, and that'll be the early meeting. Can we decide right now? Is that going to be 5:15 or 5:30?
We anticipate that we will need a closed session beforehand to finalize some information, and so at this point in time, we're recommending a closed session at 5 o'clock, and whether that means that we can start at 5:15 or 5:30. It shouldn't be a lengthy closed session, but we'll need to have something beforehand. Would prefer this one to be at the beginning of the meeting rather than the end, because if we need to go longer in the closed session than we have time allocated, we can do that, and we can shorten up the regular session, but we need to make sure that we have the necessary time for the closed session.
Okay. So on May 6th, we'll plan on a closed session at 5 o'clock, and I don't know, Deb, maybe post, I don't know what we're discussing in that, but maybe post the regular meeting for 5:15 in case we're done early? Sounds good. And then we've got another board meeting on May 20th at, we'll keep our regular time at 6:30, and then again in June on the 10th and the 17th. Any questions on the calendar, upcoming events? Are we at the end here? It looks like we are. So I will move to go into, make sure I'm reading the right thing here. I will move to adjourn into executive session. Pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, a review and potential action to approve the closed session minutes of April 1st, 2019, discuss teacher non-renewals, and personnel discussion.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn to closed session, and I'll do a roll call, starting with Ken.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much, and we'll adjourn in the closed session upstairs.